Please call the roll.
Reverend Childs?
Here.
Dr. Jacobowitz, here. Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Lyle?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Spicer?
Here.
Orders for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going back to public. Okay, we're going back to public session. We have one resolution coming out of executive session. You have to indulge me, I forgot my glasses. Resolution two thousand nineteen BOE thirty-seven. Be resolved that pursuant to sections thirty thirty-one and thirty nineteen A of the education law, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby terminates the probationary appointment of Eric Bradford as an assistant principal in the district in the assistant principal tenure area, effective January seventeenth, two thousand twenty, and be further resolved that the Board hereby directs the board clerk to notify the employee that his employment in the district shall terminate on the above date. May I have a motion?
Sum of.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes unanimously. Public participation. If anyone would like to address the Board, please come forward. Is there a sign up sheet with anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, but I'd like to say a few words.
Okay. Two minutes? Approximately.
I guarantee I'll give you two minutes or less. So, President Shaughnessy and Steve Collins, just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your support to BOCES. I know Jim probably thanks you often, but I just wanted to come out and take this opportunity to unsee the new building. I haven't seen it since its renovation. It looks beautiful. And I think the relationship that we've shared with Kingston over the years has been terrific, and I just look forward to that continued relationship. And I think you're getting a good value for your money, and I think we're lucky to have your students at BOCES. So, I've had the opportunity to meet many of them over the years, and they're great students. And so, just wanted to thank you and appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service on the BOCES Board. Any other member of the public wishing to address us? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to approval of the minutes of the November twentieth, two thousand nineteen Board meeting.
Seven.
Any corrections or comments? Call the question, all in favor of approving the minutes of November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimously passes. Superintendent's report, Dr. Patalino.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Okay, first thing we have today on our superintendent's report is our district superintendent from BOCES, Dr. Corey, and he's brought a whole team of people with him.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you, members of the Kingston Board. I always appreciate the opportunity to come out and meet with the Board. Those of you who've been here a few years know that I typically go over finances and student participation. But at a recent Board meeting at Ulster BOCES, we talked about engaging students, having students come. And so, we have students from Kingston who participate in various programs, and they'll be coming up in a few minutes and speaking about their programs. I do want to thank Jim Shaughnessy and Chris Farrell, both who are from Kingston, who sit on the BOCES Board. They give freely of their time, and, you know, Chris this year is the president of the BOCES Board, and Jim serving double duty as a trustee of the BOCES Board, but as president of your Board. It's really a service to your community that you have such wonderful and active participants in the education of our children. I do want to introduce Jonah Shanker and Allison Dodd, my deputy superintendent and assistant superintendent, who are here, as well as three of my principals, who I'll introduce in a few seconds. I do want to just highlight the financial piece, I'll be real quick. We continue to do, as Chris mentioned, a pretty significant business with Ulster BOCES. We see a five-year history, and the total growth in BOCES participation in COSER has grown from in the fifteen sixteen school year, ten point one million dollars, to this year, as of December fifth, sixteen point five, five million dollars. Most of the year-to-year growth from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty, as you look down, is most of that is in the area of special education. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a few seconds. Your aid ratio is sixty-eight point nine percent. It's been pretty consistent over the years. Some, looking at the eighteen nineteen school year or the year that was just completed, we anticipate that you'll get a refund from us, that is COSER participation, funds that were given to us from Kingston that were not spent. You should be getting a check from us in about a month, about one point five million dollars. And we estimate that your BOCES aid that will come in the twenty twenty-one school year will be just under four million dollars, three point nine million dollars. So, that's a pretty good investment, return on the investment that we continue to work really hard at. When you look at the second page of that handout, which is, you know, how do Kingston students participate in our program? You can see that in our Career Tech Program and our New Asian Programs, we have a total enrollment of nine hundred and forty-four students, of whom two hundred and eighty come from Kingston, just about thirty percent. If you look at our special ed programs, we have a hundred and eighty-three students in our special education program, sixty-seven are from Kingston, again, about thirty percent. And when you look at PTAC, you have a higher percentage there. And I've always commented and thanked the Board for their support, and certainly Paul for his support of our PTAC program. It is the right program for some students, and we'll have some PTAC students come up and talk a little bit about their experience shortly. So, overall, your participation in our programs continues to be very strong, and as to echo Chris's comments, certainly want to thank you for that. I know that, I do want to thank you also for your support of participation of your teachers and administrators in our High Tech High initiative. Over about three years ago, we, well, over the past several years, we've established a relationship with High Tech High in San Diego, which is probably just the country's leading project-based learning school system. They've been doing it, project-based learning and design thinking, for probably close to twenty years. I've been traveling there probably for at least the last six or seven years, trying to establish a relationship with them. And about two years ago, I was able to finally break through and get them to essentially bring the experience of High Tech High to the East Coast. Not everybody can travel out to San Diego. So, two years ago, we started what we call High Tech High one point oh, an introduction to project-based learning and process-based learning, using High Tech High's well-tried and tested model of teaching and integration with students. Done a great job. We had over a hundred and ten teachers from not just Ulster County, but the region, the really expanded region, come and participate. And we offer a sequence of courses, introduction in the fall, and then kind of what we call the ending, you know, reporting out on what you've done in the spring. We also, you know, as an optional piece, sponsor a two-day workshop out in San Diego so that teachers can see the actual activities that take place in their school. That was very successful. We had about forty, forty-five teachers travel with us out to San Diego last January. We have High Tech High two point oh going this year, which is essentially working the High Tech High project-based model, but working with community partners. I believe Kingston is sending five or six teachers to those programs, and so they're essentially learning the kind of nuts and bolts of project-based learning, establishing relationship with community partners so that the projects will pay back to the community. And so, we're thrilled at that level of support. And, you know, my experience is, it starts with five, and then five other teachers want to get involved, and five other teachers want to get involved, and so on. So, we can turnkey it here on the East Coast. We can also bring people out to the West Coast. And I think seeing it in action, the people who have been doing it for twenty years, and having teachers talk to teachers who have been, you know, facing the challenges, not just listening to a speaker, but listening to another teacher, a colleague, and also that network, that connection. Everybody who I've ever met at High Tech High says, here's my email address. If you have any questions, you run into anything in this day and age, you can Zoom them, you can Skype them, you can email them, you can text them, and we've seen a lot of ongoing communication. So, we're thrilled with Kingston's joining us in this effort this year. And again, thank you to Paul for really initiating that and supporting it. I know he's been a huge supporter of that program and really all of our programs. I did give you a copy of our fashion magazine. Our fashion design folks did a lookbook. This is one of our really stellar programs, all done by students in various programs. The Reverend said to me, I think they made a mistake. They turned it upside down halfway through. I think that's purposeful, you know, but, you know, you have two different covers. But great work. Our fashion program is a wonderful program. We're expanding it next year to not just fashion, but the business of fashion marketing and merchandise. Our teacher is outstanding. And finally, I did want to mention that I sent to the superintendents, and I think some of the Board members, Patterns for Progress issued a report last early this September talking about the challenges of educating people with the Mid-Hudson region. I pulled out all of the information on Ulster County and really kind of focused on that with the superintendents. Interestingly enough, about three months before that report, at our summer retreat, I shared with the superintendents enrollment projections going out the next ten years. And basically, it really, that report confirmed what I had presented to the superintendents, that enrollment will be down significantly. And actually, Kingston's projected enrollment will go down slower than everybody else in the county, but we're probably looking at about a twenty-something percent decline in enrollment in the county. I think Kingston's projections are around five or six percent decline. But the challenge I presented to the superintendents was, if we know this is going to happen, and it's going to happen, unless something dramatic changes in the county, how do we plan to continue to offer a quality education to all of our students, regardless of zip code or boundary? I threw that out. I look at Robin because she knows, we've talked about this five years, six years now, because it's, you know, it's kind of knowing what's down the road, and if you get enough time, you can carefully plan for solutions. You know, I always throw seeds out, and sometimes the ground isn't fertile. But, you know, I will continue to throw those seeds out to foster that discussion. But I think collectively, and that is all eight school districts in the county, working together can come up with a model that will continue to hold Ulster County education in high stead, offering high-quality programs for all students, regardless of zip code. It's going to take out-of-the-box thinking, and it's going to take creative solutions. But I think the talent and the brain power is here in the county. We just have to kind of lose some of the traditional ideas about how we deliver education and be willing to take some chances and some risks. That being said, there was a line in that report that really struck me, and I think it was, it said something to the effect, and I'll paraphrase it, if this was a business and we knew that was happening, this was going to happen, and we did nothing, we would be out of business. And I think if we just ignore the problem and think it's going to go away, you know, other things will happen across the next ten years. I just read a report on educating the class of twenty thirty, which is our current second graders for their future. Education is going to change dramatically now when they hit twelfth grade. And if we're preparing them for our future, we should not ignore all of the science that are out there about how education is going to change, how technology is going to influence education, how the world economy, how global systems are going to change all of this. And so, that report was really, I think, the beginning of a wake-up call. Hopefully, you know, maybe Ulster County School Boards and others will pick that up and say, you know, so what are we going to do about it? Again, thank you so much for your time and attention. With that, I'd like to introduce our CTE principal, Amy Sturinski, who's going to talk a little bit about the program and introduce some of our CTE. And Jill, are you going to join?
I'm going to join.
Okay. Yeah, I think our CTE students are.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amy Sturinski. I'm the principal of the Career and Tech Center.
Jill Porarty, the principal at Center for Innovative Teaching and Learning, Whole Child Education. Some of you I know, because I was at Kingston for almost ten years, so I'm excited to be back partnering with you. So, it's exciting to see Nora, you look lovely, by the way. So, and we have two students with us, Edwin Rodriguez and Malakai Bridges. He's a senior, and Edwin is a junior. And they spend half a day at my center, and they go over to Career and Tech. So.
So, just to give you a brief overview of Career and Tech, I'm sure you all have a common understanding of some of the things that we do at the Career and Technical Center. But there are a few things that I just want to highlight before we let our students share their experiences. And one of the things that I think is really important is the success rate of our students. Last year, we had a ninety-nine percent pass rate. So, ninety-nine percent of our students that attended passed their programs. And what's even more remarkable is last year, students that attended CTE, ninety-five percent of them earned their high school diploma. So, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the national average for students concentrating in CTE, but that national average of students earning their high school diplomas, those concentrating in CTE, is ninety-three percent compared with eighty percent national average for the freshman high school graduation rate. So, that's really exciting to me. The attendance rate was also in ninety percent because students are engaged. And I'm looking forward to hearing what our students have to share about that. But basically, we have over two thousand programs. We have a new program next year that we're excited to be offering, and that's an animal science program. We have a lot of opportunities for collaboration. The lookbook is an example, because not only was that driven by our fashion design students, but there were a lot of other trade programs collaborating in that project. And it culminated with a studio event. So, the students are doing most of this work, which is another thing that we really emphasize, is empowering our students, creating a professional culture, and also being more explicit about those soft skills that we know students need to be successful later in life.
So, this is my second year at the center, and it's really exciting. You know, the first year was really about trying to look at the programs, see, you know, celebrate what's good, and then really look at where we needed to grow. So, in my second year, you know, I have a great administrative team, really great support, and thank you to you all here at Kingston. We have various programs from K through twelve now. So, this year, we piloted our first elementary program, so it's K five. And it's, well, we consider management needs. Kids are really struggle with their emotional regulation, various trauma in their life. So, we have four one-two, and we were able to keep the student-to-teacher ratio way down. And so, we spent the summer working with, you know, different experts, from related services to teachers, to psychologists, and really came up with a program that not only the environment has different zones and what that looks like, we researched what students really need, so our environment matches their needs, but Whole Child wraparound services within the day. So, everybody really approaches the child. It's not just, all right, I take you over here, we do our service. So, it's been going great. This is our, I guess we're on our fourth month, and the kids came in, and to be very honest, they weren't even sitting when they got there. Now, they're having full Thanksgiving dinners together while we had lunch, and it was amazing to see their growth. So, we also had a K five Asperger's, excuse me, autism program, which is wonderful. And again, same type of thing. We looked at the environment, what their needs were learning, and so we're building that. Also, we have about sixty-five percent students on the spectrum. So, we have those programs going. And then we also have our students that are really just, you know, regular students that just have a hard time in traditional typical schools. And so, we're looking from them in the moment, and maybe they needed outdoor education. Maybe they just needed, you know, more of a homey environment, more wraparound services. So, when we hear from these two young gentlemen, they're going to talk about, you know, just their experience. We also, I'm sure you know, have a new program, second year at Ramapo KIAP for students, and that's really outdoor education, and it allows for students to explore through outdoors learning, but also get what they need academically. So, I will turn this over to Edwin Rodriguez, so he can share. He's eleventh grader, and he was at Ramapo last year, first year, piloted the program, and now he's back at the center for his eleventh and twelfth grade, and he's also had a day at HVAC.
BOCES means a lot to me. Kingston really wasn't a good fit for me. When I came to Ulster BOCES, I met a lot of great people. I got used to the environment. When I first came here, I didn't think I would, it would work for me, but I learned and I grew from my past. I met great teachers and great staff, students. I went to Ramapo and found great teachers and and was surrounded by a great environment. I also worked at Ramapo and worked with kids, and because of those kids, I grew. They reminded me of myself. I saw myself in them when I worked with them. Now, I'm in Career Tech, and I actually love it. The environment suits me and the teachers and everyone in their health being when I have problems. I thank everyone for everything that they have done for me with them. I want to be around them.
I just want to say something about Edwin. So, Edwin, last year, when he came to Ramapo for the first time, and do you want me to share a little bit about your growth as well? So, he really had a hard time even being around people. He had his own things. He wanted to be left alone, struggled academically because of, you know, things he was going through. So, he went through the program, ended up doing a really phenomenal job at the end of June, really grew. Over the summer, they asked him to come and work with kids, and he is top of his class now, doing very, very well at our center and at HVAC. So, he's come full circle, not, you know, needing the grades to like high nineties. So, I just want, I know it's nerve-wracking to talk in front of people. He did a great job, but really, he's a success story, and it's amazing. So, he's going to, you know, go on and, you know, contribute to the community, and it's going to be amazing.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Malakai. I'm from Kingston. I'm an Ulster BOCES alternative student. I've been in school for about two to three years. I do want to honestly say I've made such great progress of just turning to school. I really don't want to make a story about my past. I don't really like to talk about my whole past. Because when I first started high school, I really didn't know, like, how to fit in, having friends, and, you know, I would act out, you know, get myself in trouble, or, you know, act like I run the school, you know, try to show off, get friends, and try to fit in with the school. Kind of find out that I really didn't turn out what I needed to as well. So, I got placed at BOCES. When I got transferred to BOCES, I felt like this was all happening again, like, you know, come to another school, you know, don't have any friends, not going to fit in, and stuff like that. Last minute after I walked through the door, I got greeted with like a level three, like, oh, go up to BOCES. You know, I met all my staff, like my guidance counselor, my social worker, my teacher I'm going to be with. Basically, people that, you know, in the school that helps kids, you know, get throughout their day, throughout their school years to, you know, thing. Kind of starting a little nervous here. The following things I might name is like the people that, you know, helped me get through BOCES my two to three years. Like, when I first got transferred to BOCES, I was like, okay, you know, I'm not going to be with my friends, not going to be with my describing when I was in sixth grade. I was like, you know what, I think I want to just get to school. It's not my thing to be in BOCES, away from my friends or stuff like that. But the administration team, my teacher, Don Crum, our crisis worker, Leslie Shambow, my teacher assistant that helped me do like my work, stuff like that, when my teacher wasn't able to help me. We got Ruben, which is our crisis worker, and Jen Blackman, which was my social worker for the first two years that I was at BOCES. And, you know, what kind of made me feel more comfortable though is that I can now, I can still, you know, participate in Kingston's like sports, prom, dances, and stuff like that. I have, you know, abilities to still do all that. When I first went to BOCES, like I said, I wanted to give up my career, like give up school or something like that, because, you know, I'm not with my original people. But I met my guidance counselor, Aaron Everly. My guidance counselor, he helped me do, like, plan my future, knowing I wanted to be, like, involved with law enforcement. He talked to me, like, listen, okay, I heard your history, you know, in the high school, and I really like great, but if I put you in a program at Career Tech, for law of justice, you know, you got to get it together because it's a professional-type place. So, when he talked me through that, you know, it kind of got me thinking, like, okay, I really want to do this. I don't want to mess this up. Let me basically get my act together. When I first started at Career Tech, I started off as well. I'm doing good, and, you know, like I said, I want to do the program, so I got my behavior together and wanted to do it. I started going downhill a little bit, you know, since I got to class. I started getting like, okay, I'm a criminal justice now, law officer now. I'm thinking I'm back to my post, so I'll run the school. Okay, you know, law officer now, so I run the school, you know, blah, blah, blah. I got myself in a little bit of trouble, you know. So, to the point that I took it to the extent that I was at the edge, you know, not be able to do the program no more because, you know, I'm not taking responsibility, like I said, BOCES is a professional place, so I'm acting like a, you know, kid that has a badge and just run around, figure out the place. My team, the people I knew before, Leslie and all of them, they all talked to me like, okay, you know, this is what you want to do. Aaron works for, I'll get you into the program. You know, you want to continue your law position, law person, don't act like this, for example, such and such. So, it got me thinking over some time, like all the people trying to get me to, like, get my act together, like staying in this program. So, over the summertime, you know, I thought, okay, you know, I'm grown up, I'm more mature. I'm about to become a senior now, can't act like I did before. Then you basically get it together. I realize that I have to be respectful, I have to be responsible, and I always got to be ready to learn for this environment. This year, I've been doing a lot better. I haven't really gotten, well, I haven't gotten in trouble at all this year. My first year, I never got in trouble, so. I got in trouble, you know, I wasn't in personal space. I wasn't acting like I was running the school. I wasn't, you know, I had my boundaries, and I had my place that I had to be in as a student. This year, I'm a lot better. I got promoted for a sergeant in my class, so now I'm class sergeant. I wanted it last year, and that's another reason why it got me off track, because I couldn't get what I wanted as a sergeant position. But now that my teachers see that I'm, like, maturing, doing better, and actually want to take this series that I got promoted as a sergeant. I also got elected for a senior council for supporting BOCES in Kingston as well. So, now I'm just personally councils, and I got a couple of my classes that, you know, kind of helped, try to make BOCES, it's a good place, it's a great place, but try, you know, what can be fixed, what can be better, what can, you know, make our year go smoother and stuff like that. I got student, you know, all these great things happened to me, so it made me like, okay, all this stuff, all this reward I'm getting towards me is like making me a better person, motivating me, okay, let's keep going, let's keep doing it, not give up, you know. Basically, got another chance from when I was in Kingston, you know, it wasn't look that bad. Oh, he's not a great kid, or bad stories about me. So, now I'm getting looked at, okay, he's a great kid, he changed weight. So, it's kind of motivating me to keep doing what I'm doing. What keeps me motivated at Career and Tech is, you know, PBIS. What you do PBIS, which is like, you know, professional, you get tickets, you win prizes and stuff like that. So, that's, I kind of like doing something like, you know, trying to get those prizes. I love, like, when you come inside, like, as soon as you walk through the door, you get greeted. And I, you know, I love when I come in, like, hey, you know, it's like a bridge, you know. Not only good greetings, it makes me feel good, feel loved, and like I, like they want me here and stuff like that. You know, like our security guards that we have, they motivate me every morning. Like, even if I have bad days, you know, they talk to me, get, like, get me through, like. I'm the type of person, you know, I kind of shut down, well, not as much now, but I tend to shut down easily, like, when I'm having a bad day. So, like, if I don't. So like if I don't go to Career Tech and they see that I'm having a bad day, they know I'm shutting down and mess up and start over again. So they see how my attitude is before I come to class, which they motivate me to, you know, do that, do well. I also got our school SROs in our schools, like, you know, they motivate me as well to. Speaking about that, SROs, you know, all our security teams have been talking to me, joined the Ulster County Sheriff's Department. We have an internship with the PDS program. So every Monday, every other Mondays and Wednesdays, I'm up in the jails, you know, learning stuff like with law enforcement, do inside and outside the jails. We have our physical training. Basically, it's prepared for my future. So to be honest, Bosys was actually a good, great place for me to move to. Because if I wasn't at Bosys, probably in Kingston, I probably would, like I said, I probably would have given up right now. So I'm glad that I have these support, these people here to, you know, give me another chance and prove myself that I'm not the person that people think I am.
All right. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having the Hudson Valley Pathways Academy here as well and for being such a supporter of the organization. Just briefly about the PTEC model. It's a four-year high school experience, twenty-two credits, plus the five regional exams. And then so much more, inclusive of the two-year experience for the associate's degree. No cost to the student or their families, you know, the scholars or their families. At Ulster Community College, the young scholars are able to earn an associate's degree currently in health informatics, advanced manufacturing, and network administration. And in the future, we will be piloting a business entrepreneurship pathway with Ulster Community College. They've asked for that to happen. That'll be a great value add for these guys. I've asked that the young scholars tonight, once they introduce themselves, speak to you about why they choose PTEC and why it's a good option for them. How we work to make them more globally competent, and what we do with workplace learning and workplace learning challenges. And I thought those were good questions for them to focus on, to get to the point that our task each and every day is to help them become employable, good people, and develop their capacity for those things. So I'm really proud to be here and humbled to listen to you gentlemen as well, speaking about your programs, but specifically with these three young scholars. They show a great deal of leadership and have had the opportunity to communicate their message and be ambassadors for Hudson Valley Pathways Academy, Kingston Central School District, and themselves in the community by organizing and hosting public events, by interfacing with industry partners, hosting meetings with industry, by speaking at public events for community organizations, at galas, and by hosting public galas for industry partners. So there's a lot, without getting too specific, perhaps they will, there's a lot of work power here in front of you. And it's really important to know that our industry partners are entrusting them to create real solutions for real problems that they're having. And I think you'll hear some of that voice. I told them they had about ninety seconds each. They, like us as adults, may not be able to peruse their remarks, so maybe a little bit longer than that. But I ask that, you know, tell your whole story, but let's see.
Sure enough.
Yeah, well, let's be on point, okay? So this is Lupe, Regan, and Sage.
Hi, as he says, I'm Lupe. Nice to meet you all. And I want to start off by saying thank you for allowing PTEC to exist, like it's such a great program. At first, I didn't know what I was getting into. So, because my sister also goes here, or yeah, goes here. She's at chapter four, which is 12th grade. And at first, when she told me about it, when she was in ninth grade, I was seventh grade. She had told me like what it was first about. And I was kind of iffy about it. Eighth grade then, passed. And I was deciding whether I wanted to go to Kingston High School or PTEC. And I ended up wanting to come here because it like, it sounded like something that I never knew existed. So that was really empowering for me to be able to meet Mr. Harris too. He's over there. To be able to meet him. And he was very nice at the beginning, because we were at the, what is it called? The, yeah, open house. And that's when I met her too. She was at chapter one. And I was like, chapter, no, you're chapter one. Yeah, okay. She was chapter one. And I was like, wow. And my sister was chapter three at that time. Yeah, chapter three. And it was just really, like I had a good feeling about the people and the teachers. I met everybody at the open house. Then when it was the first day of school, I was really nervous because I didn't know nobody. But then I'm like, there's people from my own school when I went to Miller, they were going there. So I had those few people. But then, once I met everybody, chapter two, chapter three, it was just like really nice. And then when, like she said, we go to Ramapo the second day. This year, we went like three days after we started school. And I would say that's better because within those three days, we got to know the chapter ones more. So you could communicate with them more. Then once you went to Ramapo, you wouldn't feel as like, as nervous to be with strangers, you know? So once you're, you're with these new people, you feel at home. Because we formed a bond over these four months that we've been in school. And, but last year, for me, it was a great experience, and I'm really lucky to have been here. I'm lucky that I got to meet Mr. Harris. I'm lucky that I got to meet these people. I'm lucky that I got to meet all the teachers there. And I'm lucky to be meeting all of you today. So thank you.
I'm gonna walk around a little bit, just letting you know. I don't like being behind that podium. I am currently in my third year at PTEC, so I have most experience here. PTEC is interactive with business partners and industries, and we do workplace learning challenges, where we actually build designs. We, currently, my last project was with the Council of Industry, and we actually went to their luncheon with over three hundred attendants of different industries. And we got to sit down and actually meet with all of them and possibly build new partnerships for our school. These partnerships, they all lead to the degree that we get at the end of PTEC with our associates. So these possible business partners that we are working with in our freshman, throughout our whole entire school year, could possibly hire us at the end of our schooling, because we have an associate in that field and we have experience with that business partner. I am in my third year, so it has given me like the confidence to come up here and talk to you all and walk around instead of standing behind that podium. It's taught me how to be a leader, communication, all of these soft skills that you don't always get in a public school because there's, you know, twenty kids in your class. While here, I have only twelve other kids in my class. So I feel like it teaches you more real life and things that you need than just, here's your history packet. So I am proud to make the decision to go to PTEC, just as I was in my freshman year.
I'm the same thing with Regan, I really can't stand being behind somebody else anymore. So, hi, I'm Sage. I'm a chapter two student. And pretty much adding on to what Regan and Lupe were saying, I'm proud to become a PTEC student. I didn't really have the best of history in Kingston, not from poor behavior, but just from my, just from issues that eventually grew up, grew on, and different things that ended up happening throughout elementary and middle school. This was a great alternative because with PTEC, it taught me to learn how to work in smaller groups. And as well, one of the questions I had from Mr. Harris was, how do we work with global conferences? This brings in our small groups together and our small chapters overall. And we, last year, we worked on water, and this year, we worked on refugees. Yeah, they might seem like really weird topics when you first think of it. But in reality, there's so many issues that we have going on in the world that just go straight over our head. And at the Anna DeBine Building that we're at right now, we have a stream that's just a little walk, a little walk away. And then we got to spend time in our freshman year, working on going around the woods, built, physically building rafts, working in groups of people that we don't, that we didn't really know. Our, my, at least, always my freshman year, for example, we built rafts. And we're told we had to build rafts with men who was complete strangers. And then the strangers became friends, and then we all built our own bonds. And it's just something so great that might seem so small. And like we put on, this year, we put on an event that was called A Walk in Our Shoes. And it was about refugees and learning about what issues refugees have gone through and how, like how amazing journeys they've gone through just to get, just to get happy. And none of us have really been that aware of it. Because we see all these issues in the news, how bad refugees are put down to be. But then, there's such these amazing people, they just want to be happy, that they travel thousands of miles away, they go through deserts, they, they go through as much as they possibly can with their families, little to nothing, just so they can be happy. And this brings awareness to a lot of the stuff that we aren't really that aware of. And we weren't really the people that chose the issues. Our teachers came into school saying, oh, this is our issue. We were at first like, why refugees, why water? Yeah, last year, we kind of spent like half the school year learning about water. Yes, we, yes, we might kind of hate water at this point, because we're kind of religious about it. But still, now we were, there's so many issues about, you know, water that we aren't really that aware of because we're set in this kind of society that's like, everything's perfect, everything will be perfect. Not everything's gonna be perfect. It's life, there's always problems going on. Just day by day learning that we're all gonna end up having to learn. And I can't wait to, I can't, that's, that's perfect English. But I can't wait for my chapter three year, my chapter four year, and then my time soon you'll start. So I'll be able to learn more and more and to grow with my chapter and to go grow with the next few chapters. And like to thank you guys for actually, for having PTEC here and letting the students and then the other Career Tech kids be able to come speak in front of you guys. This isn't really something that all of you guys would ever see, with just these young, these fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds talking in front of a whole conference that's full of adults. So that's just not something a normal school does. And that's why I'm happy we have such smaller schools that we're able to work with this. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I think that when Regan stepped out from behind the podium, it demonstrated the impact that the program is having. And I just want to personally thank the three of you for being here tonight, for taking time away from family and employment, because I know at least one of you had to take the night off to be here. So thanks so much for representing.
Needless to say, we're very proud of our kids and our programs, I'm sure as you are with all of the kids who attend the Kingston schools. So at this point, if you have any questions for me, any of the principals, or any of the students, I'd be happy to answer them. Rob?
I don't really have a question, I just have a comment, which is that every time you get up here and talk about the work you do, or we go to Bosys and we see the work that's happening there, I'm so impressed. And I'm so proud of the work that, and the courses and the opportunities that our students have through Bosys. And then when I see the students, it just, I mean, these are Kingston kids, it just makes me proud. And it's, it's just great, so thank you.
Thank you, Rob, thank you. I'm thrilled, I'm blessed with an incredible team, a very supportive board, who gives me the opportunity and the permission to, you know, challenge kids, bring new programs and ideas to the county and to the programs that we have. You know, we established a partnership with Stanford University where we teach design thinking, or we learn design thinking through the Stanford University D-School, which is internationally known. So a number of my administrators have gone through design thinking training. We will be bringing with Corwin Press, Visible Learning Institute to the region, with Professor John Hattie, who's internationally known. He'll be talking about visible learning, that'll happen this spring. Next spring, I was able to work with the folks from the Nobel Museum in Stockholm, Sweden. It appears that we'll have two or three Nobel laureates come to Ulster Bosys to talk with teachers about the importance of teachers and encouraging young people's dreams. And so, you know, it's all about pushing the envelope and bringing things to the region that will reinforce for everybody the importance of the work that we do. So thank you, Rob, for your comments, and for you all, for your, you know, and Paul particularly, because he's, he's the supporter that, you know, every superintendent, every Bosys superintendent looks for. So I appreciate his, you know, unquestioned support of our program. So thank you. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other?
Not a question but a comment, just gratitude for inspiring the courage and professionalism of your young student presentation. Just outstanding students, outstanding. It's a really tough thing to do, very well, very well done.
I'd like to make a few comments. I've been on the Bosys Board, this is my fifth year. And my perspective about Bosys and CTE is vastly different than what it was five years ago. And they're your students, but they're also our students. And the fashion book, they do this every year. It just blows me away. It looks, you know, it looks like something that was produced on Madison Avenue. And it's kids that do it. They, you know, they're fashion designers, they're models, they're photographers, there's writers, they're set designers. And, you know, they're all learning that it's a project, you know, project learning. And it's really effective. And the kids at, at PTEC, they're really, they're doing an excellent job. And it's very impressive to see how, how mature they are and how, and how they're able to stand and address the Board of Education. And there's also a lot of self-awareness that they're given in their curriculum. You know, I think I mentioned this, mentioned this before, glows and grows, you know? What have you accomplished last year? What do you want to accomplish next year? And it's, you know, it's very well done, and they each make a four or five-minute presentation with graphics. And, you know, it's just really, really interesting to watch. And in terms of the, well, also, the graduation rate for, for CTE students, ninety-five percent of students who are, you know, into Bosys for two years usually, you know, they have a ninety-five percent graduation rate from their high school, from their, from their home high school. And that's really very impressive. And so that's one way we can all look forward to meeting our, our vision of, our mission of graduating all the students all of the time. It's really, it really helps that to happen. And the last thing I'll say is the Pattern for Progress Report. And actually, today, I got in my email a link to the expanded report, which was, what was available about six weeks ago was just preliminary. And I don't know if this is the final or not. But there's lots of challenges that are gonna be, that are happening in, in the Mid-Hudson Valley. And I think that Kingston has navigated that well. And so if our, if our enrollment is stable or just going down a little bit in the next ten years, there are districts in the county that are gonna lose, that their enrollments are gonna go down twenty percent. And their enrollments are all And their enrollments are already down significantly in the last ten years. So how do we devise our education and revise it, our educational process, so that we can afford to educate all of our students the way we want to, not only just in Kingston, but in the rest of the county as well? So that's a big challenge. And, and I think Bosse's is, is going to be a key part of, of solving that because I don't think anybody can solve it by themselves. So I want to thank you for bringing all the people that you did.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you always. And everybody have a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do just want to say quickly that I know I always tout our partnership, and I still continue to feel that way, but one thing I think is not known, and you can leave in two seconds. Is, is how responsive Bosse's, Bosse's is to our needs. So we talk a lot about the CTE things, but the many things that, that Chuck and his team have come up with for us are things that we're struggling with and I'll, and we'll go to Bosse's and say, and I'll say, Chuck, I need this. And they work really hard to make sure that they can create that. And it's, it's really important. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we just can't do, and we need that collaboration with Bosse's. And I appreciate the flexibility and the efforts that they put forth to, to create new things because of a need we have here in Kingston. So that's just a little something I think that we don't talk about very much, that happens, you know, every year at Bosse's in this collaboration. So I thank them for that. So thank you. Now you can go.
And I want to thank Chris Farrell. He's, he does a wonderful job on the Bosse's Board and is serving as president this year.
Yeah, I didn't know Chris was a town. Chris is a member of Assauke's Town.
Oh, yes, yes.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay, next in the superintendent's board, now that we have basically an empty room. Our, our Second Century Project report, and I think we have our friends from KSQ, BBL, and Todd Clapper is here. Actually, we have Alex and Obi tonight, not Armand. Very good.
Thank you again for having us here. We've been coming to these board meetings. And it's always a tough act to follow. Hope colleague has a good one. We've talked on Main Days Two, not the used track, but the capital projects, where the preliminary statements and documents, getting with all the contractors. Just here, we're not for the work program coming up in the summer, but that's the state place. And we'll soon enough have some great photos and progress stuff. For Main Days Two, Alan, Alex, Obi are here. Want us to do some slides and some highlights there.
Evening, everybody. Some highlights for the high school project. I know we were here maybe two or three weeks ago. We've made a lot of progress since then. We started putting ceramic tile up in the bathrooms on the second floor. We're working our way top to bottom. So next time I present, we should have some people on the first floor looking the way the second floor is starting to turn out right now. In the auditorium, painting is finishing up. They painted the walls. At first, there were two colors on the walls. Now everything's one color. The acoustical panels are coming later this month. They are expected to be complete shortly. They're all fantastic. Once they're up. On the stage, the chimney framing has started. We're going to be encasing the black brick chimney that's up there right now. And it'll be painted. Speaking of painting, we're still working on painting on the second floor. All the patching is done. So now the contractor is going through the floor and giving a fresh coating coat of paint and everything. So it's cleaning up a lot of things that we need to paint to do.
Oh, great.
We're also framing and sheetrocking and taping in the bathrooms on the first floor. We have a lot of framing and sheetrock going in on the ground floor as well, and the art rooms, the nurses area, everywhere. Like I said, they just started doing the tile yesterday. The spots where you don't see anything, it'll be like solid, there's a mosaic pattern that goes throughout. The finishes that we have going in main are matching what we did in southern and the west.
We presented before within Southman and the wings, we always say we must try to tie main back into that design to that study. And this is one of those, in certain areas, we're treating the bathroom the same. So when people go to a bathroom in Southman or main, it's one school, we have the same study.
On the chimney framing, shortly they'll be sheetrocking this. They're putting in all their rough in behind it right now. So there's a fuel exhaust, I believe. Then they'll sheetrock it, paint it. The stage flooring is also complete. I believe I presented that last time. That'll be painted black. That'll be one of the last things that'll be done in the auditorium. Like I said, the walls have been painted. The ceiling has also been painted, the white arches. It looks fantastic in there. On the first floor, the plumbing rough end is now complete. So shortly they'll start to enclose those walls. We'll sheetrock and close everything up. On the second floor, they started doing their, this isn't complete. They started doing their first coat of paint. They'll come back and do a final coat towards the end when everything is cleaned up. This is just their first coat, but it really cleans up the room already. On the ground floor, this is in what will be the new family and computer sciences room. Started sheetrocking and taping in there. In the ceilings in the bathrooms, all of the ceilings are up and the hole, these are holes for the access doors. So if Tom or any of the maintenance people need to go in and access a valve or paint a filter or whatever goes up the ceiling, they can get up there and do it in the future. So in a few weeks, they'll be putting in the access doors to fill those holes. And then in the nurses area, last time I presented, we have all the underground plumbing complete. They instantly got in there and they started framing. They actually started a little bit of sheetrock in there earlier this week as well. That area is really starting to take shape. And continuing with putting new door frames in. And up above the auditorium in the mezzanine area, we got all of the large mechanical units that were served in the auditorium air conditioning in that space. Now they closed it up with the yellow ceiling and the new new bomb panels that you see on the new things. Those will also be up above the operating as well. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have to say, I know we were always very excited when we were talking about the new building, but I am as excited about this because I just think it was so important for us to bring that main building up to date and clean it up and make it as inspiring to be in as the new part of the building is. So I think this is just great. And I, I think it's as important, if not more important. So thank you. And thank you, board, for doing that.
It's been a little tricky process with the wings, obviously there were new buildings. With Southman, we pretty much got it, the whole building of them, the walls interior. So that was a little more difficult. But in main, we're maintaining the existing building. So every time a contractor opens a door, this is a surprise. It's tighter there, nobody can call them in the mechanical space.
Fireplace.
The contractors.
On the stage.
The contractors have worked with us trying to fix some of these issues to say, we are up with the development. We're, we're beautiful enough to a certain degree. And they're, they've been cooperating. Our, our work's been pretty interesting. I think you'll be happy when you see us. If you haven't seen them already, it's nice that the paint is going out from two weeks ago. You look at the space, you don't know where you go with the contractor. They're trying to coordinate the work. And you come back a week or two weeks later and it's painted. And it is a completely different feel. So we're learning.
That's great.
What is the date on the auditorium? Is it still the same?
Yeah, kind of January.
Can you go back to slide number seven, second floor painting? Right, that one. What, what room is that?
I'm not sure off the top of my head which room that is. I can find that one.
They're going to be, they're going to be classrooms though, is that it?
This one is a classroom.
They're going to be, okay, that's right, Todd, okay.
A space like this is getting paint, ceiling paint, wall paint. Some of them were restoring the floors because it's a stone room, the floor is in very good condition. They're getting new marker boards and new projectors. So and similar teaching station in most of the classrooms. They have a similar layout.
Thank you.
And the existing wood trim is also being restored as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say that that's sort of icing on the cake, I think. I did have a call from a community member today who wanted to know when we're going to get those, those boxes out of, away from the front of Kingston High School because it's such a beautiful building. So I had to convince him that he has to wait another six months or so, and then he can see it restored, a restored beautiful building.
I saw a presentation today, I think it was today, oh, yeah, at the Chamber Breakfast this morning, the, the high school choir sang this morning. I missed most of it because I couldn't get my car door open. It was frozen. But when that is finished, I mean, that corridor there from, from north to south, the Kingston City Hall, the Broadway campus of the Health Alliance, the Kingston City School District Campus, the, the, the SUNY Ulster Building, and then the Benedictine Campus, that is just going to be amazing.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, the superintendent's board report for the superintendent. One of the goals of this year was to maintain and continue with our cultural responsive education program that we've been working on for the last few years with NYU. We are no longer working with NYU, but we wanted to continue that work and making that part of the goals is, was the reason for making sure we stay on that and report back to you. And the, inside that goal was the requirement that I report to you about cultural responsive education quarterly. This is, but when I looked at this report, I started doing the cultural response work, and I thought, you know, there's a lot of things we're doing, just our conversation that we're having, board members and administration and just throughout the district. I, I think I really wanted to just kind of really go over all the things that we're doing around, around cultural responsive education, social emotional learning, trauma-informed and restored practices. Because we are doing a whole group of things that fit into that. I always say they all funnel into the same dream. They fit into that same mold, and they lead us down to where we're looking to go. And really, it's, it's, the foundation has been built with our Ten at Five work in DTSE and with our PBIS work. So we have the foundation built, and now we're putting, now we're really putting that structure on top of that foundation. This isn't, this, I'm not going to give you a whole lot of in-depth, you know, information right now. That will come as we move through the quarters. But I wanted to just let you know and give you a surface level understanding of what we're doing so far this year. Cultural responsive education, we've moved to work with a gentleman named Dr. Alex Petersy. He is a doctoral training professor at SUNY Albany. He specializes in working in cultural responsive education, dealing with issues of race, dealing with issues of racism, dealing with cultural diversity. Last year, actually, we kind of stole him. Last year, he was hired by NICE to do a program around cultural responsive education for NICE members. And actually, we were lucky enough to receive part of that grant with collaboration with our KTF. And all of our mentors and all of our mentees, or our teachers in Kingston City School District, were part of this training last year. We were so impressed with the work they was doing. Our teachers and our, and administrators were so impressed with the work. And we asked them to come and be our cultural responsive education kind of trainer for this year and probably extending into next, hopefully if people continue to do it. So we did kick everything off on November fourteenth with faculty meeting at Bailey and Miller. We're doing some upcoming workshops now, the joint faculty meeting, they were in multiple places. And Dr. Petersy kind of laid out the groundwork of his work for the year. And we will start continuing this work. December sixteenth and December nineteenth, we're taking some small professional learning communities and really kind of working with everyone in the buildings, but doing it in small groups at a time. So we have several different things. And in one of these quarterly reports, Dr. Petersy will join me and talk to you about what he's been doing. Trauma-informed education, this is where I go into the next topic. Mrs. Beatrice Berry, the beaters, and I think most of you probably have heard about her. She did our opening day. And it was phenomenal. Everyone, there was not one person that I spoke to in our whole district who did not come out of this saying, wow, that was great. That was the best thing I've ever done, you know, in professional development. She is really, you know, a character, and she's very energetic, and she's very good at what she does. We're excited to have her here. She comes from the Center for Trauma, Center for Trauma Resilient Communities. And she'll be working with us throughout the year. District Live, so far, all the ling leaders and all the central office administrators have gone through a full two-day training with Beatrice. And that was a lot. There was, there was a lot in those two days. I think we learned a lot, but it was, it was, it was, you know, it was work. And it was a lot of hard conversations, a lot of hard thinking about what we do and how we do it and how we can lead in a situation where we have students who are, you know, impacted by trauma. Superintendent's Conference Day, all our faculty and staff were trained. So that, that was a really great opportunity for our staff to see this, this part of this work. Faculty meetings and resilience in the November Superintendent's Conference Day. So every one of our principals showed resilience to their faculty and staff. We were doing public, obviously, community showings of resilience. Each one of our buildings will show it and hopefully get their, their communities. And there's several of you I know have seen resilience. Powerful, very powerful. I recommend the, kind of the next movie to that is Paper Tigers, which you can get on Netflix if you're interested in watching that. So that's kind of your next step. And we have, that was part of the training, the secondary group during the Superintendent's Conference Day as well. JFK is in our pilot school. We're really focusing our trauma education at JFK based on our data, the fatro status of like, we really need to get the deepest dive. So we started there last year in the fall with full staff, full faculty and staff training. They created a core team, and they had a really intensive two-day training. They opened a comm room. That is just a really great place for, for kids who are feeling, are in crisis and really be able to bring them back around and be able to get them back into the learning environment. The November Superintendent's Conference Day was a full day, full staff workshop. We have a lot going on Superintendent's Conference Days, and we have things going on all over the district. And I usually drive around and I'll stop and I'll spend five minutes here, five minutes there, just kind of see what's going on, say hello, whatever. Fifty-five minutes, I stood in JFK and watched the work that faculty and staff were doing with, with Beatrice and her team, because I couldn't leave. Because it was just amazing to see the work they were doing. The entire faculty and staff was working on one problem, about one student, and how they would solve it, putting all their heads together to figure out what can we do to get this student through the, the issues that, that he has and make sure that he's successful here both, both academically but also emotionally. And it was, it was, it was a great experience to watch. It really was. I was just happy that Beatrice didn't call on me to answer. Trauma-informed education, what's next? Building, our district live, Beatrice will be with the district administration, the building administration, three more times this year, four more times this year, to continue our work and build on the training that we had on the summer. And JFK is working with Beatrice and getting their core team together, ready to turnkey their training with everybody in the district. So we're really building our own, our own capacity and then spreading it out to the rest of our, of the faculty and staff. Restorative practices, we continue our working with restorative practices. We were lucky enough to get a Safe and Supportive Schools grant, and it's funded this work and focus on our middle schools. We're working with the, the New York State Defenders Association to do this training. We spent, September, we took twenty teachers, ten from, ten from Miller, ten from Bailey. And they have fully trained and certified in restorative practices. So they are, you know, trained to do circles, council, you know, conferences, whichever you want to call them. And we also invited Ulster County probation to come in on that. So we had ten members from Ulster County probation working with our twenty teachers, getting trained all together. And you've heard me say this before, that that's purposeful. We want everyone in the community using the same restorative phrases, same restorative practices, same, same language around restorative practices. And again, you notice, you talk about same language. And again, you notice when you talk about same language, we're calling it restorative practices. It's not restorative justice, it's restorative practices. It's a different, it really is a different field, right? Restorative justice is the final end, it kind of feels like it's something that we, restorative practices is how we build our community. So, we continue to go through that training and in November, we have PLCs trained in our middle schools. And moving forward, we're going to have more professional learning teams continue to meet and continue to work on what they're doing in January, a full faculty meeting training. So, today, we had a planning session, it was Donville, myself and the two principals that have planning sessions. So, what we're doing is, we're really building the capacity of those 20 teachers who are being, who are trained, faculty members, teachers and some other people. So, we really want to build their capacity, create awareness and an understanding for the rest of the faculty, but really build the capacity of those 20 people so they can be kind of our go-to people and our, in our training people moving forward. So, that's kind of the goal this year and we'll adjust as we move next year. We have been informed that we will receive this same grant next year. So, we, so we can commit to two years of this, of this work, really getting our district up to where we want to be, where we've been talking about for a few years around restorative practices and getting us there with some intense work with some experts that are coming in to help us. So, we're excited about that. This is a, this is actually a picture of our restorative circle that was, that we were practicing over the summer, early in September when we worked with our faculty and staff. And these are our trainers, this is Johnny Conny and you, you all met Johnny Conny. Social-emotional learning, this is something we've been doing and we're talking about it and we've been, I think we kind of lost track of the Teaching Empathy Institute, but, you know, David Levine, Teaching Empathy, they're, they're here. He's here, he's embedded, he's so embedded, I think that we forget that he's here and I wanted to make sure that I don't let us forget that it's the fourth year of the partnership. But, he's been around doing dabbling before that, but this is really the fourth year of the intense partnership. He's doing social-emotional learning series, working with mindful education, empathy in the classroom, creating emotionally, emotionally safe environments and, you know, what you saw at mine or last year, you know, really the school belong. And all of you in front, we have a book called The Year of Belonging. And that is really a book about the work that David did here in the Kingston City School District last year. Little graphic of kind of what David's, of the MDF student and David Levine's plan is for this year and kind of how we're going to slowly move things up as we go through, the different things they're doing in each and he'll take a little time even to look at this, we can talk about it in more depth. And actually, I'm kind of thinking we're gonna fill in these dots as we go, see what, how far along we've been and continuing where we are. But, he's doing a little bit in a lot of places. So, we're, we're really pleased with the work that Dave's been able to do. I think our faculty and staff are really pleased with the work he's been able to do. And it goes beyond just being inside of the classrooms. He's doing things outside with the teachers, teachers are taking workshops with him. We're moving to a digital, I think he's really prepared the whole of some of his virtual or digital, digital trains that are possible so we can even expand what we're doing. So, we're excited about that. Last board meeting, I was asked what some of the book studies we've been doing, so just wanted to give you a taste of some of the things we've been doing. We started, if you remember, three years ago with the Teaching Poverty in Mind and every, every teacher in the district received that book and book studies were done throughout the district. We moved to the next in that series, which was Engaging Students with Poverty in Mind. And then some people just started to do some things on their own. How to Read to the Hard to Teach, Fostering Resilient Learners, which again is part of our trauma-informed work. Integrity was done last year. So, you all want to talk about race and you all know we did that last year. And so, you and White Fragility, which many of our teachers are doing right now, but really focused, Kingston High School has a PLC on that as well as the board doing the work on White Fragility. So, that's kind of a really quick discussion about what we're doing. A little quick report about what we're doing so far and we'll get much more in depth as we start really doing the work. And I'll probably bring some guests in here to talk to you about what they're doing. But, I'll answer any questions you have, if they have any.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you because we talked and talked and talked about restorative practices for so much, for so long. And I'm just really gratified to see that you really, you and your team have really put it into the hands of the people in the buildings. And I think that that was so important to keep the interest and also to give them the tools that they really needed for them to go forward with it. And I think we have to take care of them too because during this process, I think that there's a lot of need for them to understand where you're going. And I think that you really have made a giant step this year toward that.
I think one of the things that needs to be said is that our, our people really are hungry to do this.
That's right.
They are, they want to do this. They want to be part of this, they want to see restorative practices, they want, but they also are scared, I won't say scared, but they're nervous. They don't really know and we haven't provided them with the things that we need to do. Now, I think we're really getting there to provide people with the, with the capacity, with the knowledge they need to effectively implement this. And part of our conversation today with John and Conny, our planning meeting, we were talking about an incident and a possible restorative conference that was gonna take place tomorrow and, and John had some kind of fit. He said, "We could not do it tomorrow because we were not ready and we didn't do the thing, the buildup things to get to that conference and it was doomed to fail for sure." And so, we're not gonna, that conference is gonna happen tomorrow, we're gonna push it off to next week and so we can do some of the back. But, those are the kind of things we're learning. And I think that's important that we have the support and we're getting that, we're getting that training. Reverend Charles?
It's so important that the community know what's happening here. I attend so many meetings. One of them is at the Restorative Justice Center where the county is trying to do certain things. And certainly, it's been great seeing that the people, some of the people from probation has been in the training along with the school district. But, I really believe that we need to, this type of presentation needs to be made to them because decisions are trying to be made and they don't have the full story of what we're doing. And, and the assumption is that we're not doing a lot of this. And we're way ahead of the, of where people are in many of the areas. So, I would like to see this done also, you know, within the community so that not only that particular venue, but parents and whatnot need to do it. And we do this coffee and conversation thing and it's good to hear what little bit we're hearing from, from people there. But, I think we've got to sort of take this type of thing out into the community so that they know what we're doing, parents know what we're doing, because it will make a big difference. I mean, the, I'm just so proud that, of what's happening in the school district and, and the work that's being done. I appreciate all of you doing your job.
And I think our, our partnership with the county is big and able to expand people's knowledge of what we're doing and working together. But, I think we need to, we need to, more people need to know what, that these are the things we really are working on, this is our focus. And maybe we want to look at our coffee and conversation, kind of our, the process. And maybe it is a 10-minute presentation and then a conversation about that and other things. You know, we've really changed our parent group meeting to that kind of a format where we're going to do the first 15, 20 minutes of something that we think they want to know, something like this, something like, you know, last, last time we brought all the central administrators, I think this is who these people are because a lot of, a lot of our parents don't know who our central administrators are. So, those kind of things to give, give real value and also be able to get our word out. We'll think of some new venues.
I want to make a comment. I want to echo Dr. Corey's words that, "Sow in the seeds and we'll take it from there, see what happens." But, we've been talking about restorative justice practice for the last five years. It took a lot of time to develop this thing, but we should be glad we accomplished something so far, you know what I mean? So, we should be all proud of the work we'll be doing.
I agree that we should take the show on the road and tell people about it. I also want to thank you because I feel, I think for so long, our social and emotional kind of agenda was very scattered and felt very piecemeal and kind of frantic actually. And this feels much more cohesive and purposeful. And I know that a lot of planning has gone into this and maybe we had to start in a kind of piecemeal place in order to get here, but I really feel like we're moving in a very purposeful and cohesive direction. And I think that's really important and I think that's kind of what makes it stick. I'm really interested in the culturally responsive education piece. I remember the work that we did with NYU was very much about disproportionality and suspensions and really focusing on that. But, to me, culturally responsive education is so much bigger than that. And so, can you talk a little bit more about the work that you're doing with Dr. Petersi and what it is?
Yeah, I think that the, that is a piece. You know, disproportionality is a piece. We spent a lot of time, some, a lot of time last time when we were speaking, he was speaking about not only disproportionality in our, in the suspension, he was really looking at disproportionality, you know, in our culture, you know, as far as, you know, negative effects of bias, you know. So, we were really, spent a lot of time, there's a lot of that, there's a lot of work on just kind of understanding and infusing things into our curriculum, looking at, and again, similar to some things we did at NYU, looking at our practices and our procedures and how can we adjust them to be more culturally responsive. It's not, but it's not as, as focused on the suspension piece. That's, you know, that was a very big focus of NYU was the suspension. This is a little more, it's kind of covering in a little different, at a little different angle. And when, you know, when he comes in, we'll, we'll let everyone else, we invite you to come and see the work he's doing with our middle school so you can just kind of get a, a feeling for how, I mean, I think his, his, his presentation is, is powerful but digestible at the same time.
Okay, great, thank you. And I, and I have one more question. So, this is a great list and I'm hoping that we can add on to the bottom what we had talked about during our retreat a month ago now and what we had talked about a little bit at the board meeting last, last time, was about book studies in every school about race and maybe not disproportionality, but race and racism. And we had talked about maybe how to do that, you know, a combination of letting it be kind of school-led, but also really opening up to all the schools and telling them what the experience has been of the other schools so that they know what the resources are and maybe making the, the team at the high school available to the other schools that are interested in doing book studies on books about race to help them with that. So...
Yeah, I think that's something we'll work on and how we can, how we can facilitate that for the buildings. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a reading lesson and choice out of those, of those, of certain books and let them kind of make some choices around what they want to do and how they can, how they can implement it. We'll, we'll work on, you know, district, building by building book studies. But, there is, there's a lot of books that is on and that's good. So, we'll continue to move that.
Right. No, it is good and I, I think the focus on race is actually pretty important. So, I hope that continues to be a prime focus of those book studies.
Yeah, I think we were, you know, you said, you said we were a little frantic and, and a little scattered. You know, I think, you know, I've said the same thing for a few years, all this is funneling into the same dream and, and, you know, Tenet Five, the PBIS, all that work that, that kind of created that foundation for us to build on this. We've been spending a lot of time over the last few years doing this and I know John has probably has 50 different graphic organizers that he created showing how these things do go together. And I, and I think we've kind of, we've been pushing them closer and closer together and now we're, you know, there. So, we're, we're pleased with the work we've done and I think kind of we had to go through that, that kind of thing to get to where we are.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a much more cohesive program, I think, and that's good.
Mr. Charles?
Well, the, the way that this board has gotten to where we are, it's called building capacity. And you can go too fast, too far and frighten people and move them away from everything you're trying to accomplish and make everybody feel like a failure for, for all the attempts you want to make. So, I think the only way you could walk this road is the way the school board has walked it. I also wanted to say, to dovetail on what Reverend Charles says about letting people know what we do because I make the rounds to all the community organizations and the New Jim Crow, Citizen Action and Rise Up Kingston. And it's kind of a pleasure to sit in these meetings and to hear certain people uninformed bring up angrily all the things we're not doing. And I said, "No, we, we did that. No, we read that book. No, we, we were on that. No, that program's already in effect. Oh, no, we're bringing that person on board. Well, you need to have so-and-so come and speak. That was last week." So, I'm just, just very proud of everything that, that we've accomplished in this area, the bravery, the courage. And there's two things you have to do to be successful with this. One, you have to want to. You have to want to reach out to all of these different types of groups and people and bring on these programs. And the other thing you have to do, which is what Dr. Pedelino did, is you have to build capacity. You can only go as fast as you can go. Otherwise, it will all falls apart. So, congratulations to us all.
I think one of the things that's also in your package this month is the, our suspensions. So, quarterly, I will provide you with our, with our suspension data. And I think one of the things you'll find when we look at our long-term suspensions, I think as I said, we had 14 in the first quarter, long-term suspensions, nine of them at the high school. One of the things that you'll see though, as you read the description of those suspensions, though, one of the things we have learned and been working on over the last few years, looking at our cultural responsiveness, is taking out the suspensions that have to do with really kind of, you know, ambiguous, ambiguous infractions, you know, insubordination, disruption, things that, things that really don't have any meaning to, to the students or the families. But, you know, when, and we're not putting students out for long term. And if you look, Kingston High School, there was nine, there, it was either a violent act that was above and beyond what we could, what really we could tolerate, weapons and drugs. And so, those are the three things that, you know, those are the only three things where you're seeing students suspended for those long periods of time. And even with them, I think every single one of them was offered some other option to return to school sooner by getting some sort of counseling or some sort of help or some sort of program that we offer around their infraction to get them the help they need, their families the help they need and get them back to school sooner. And I can tell you, I don't have the data, but I'll have it, we'll have it for you next time, just from my, just Superintendent's hearing, so I go through the hearings. Just about every single one of those students took that option. So, if you saw a 20-day suspension that could be returned in five days, if they, or 10 days because they participated in this program, just about every single student took that option. So, while not what our experts would say is a restorative practice, it is, it is an attempt at a restorative, you know, reaction to some of our infractions.
So, I think a lot of this is like, you know, blowing up a balloon. As you, as you get more into it, it expands and it's, and it's easier for people to see that you're accomplishing something. And it requires a lot of patience as well, I think, especially on the part of the board because we, it takes time to change and to implement new programs. And now we can, you know, we have something that we can look at and we can be proud of as, as a board for having stuck to it. And when it first came up, I was, restorative practices, I think it was four years ago that Dave Clegg helped us rewrite our code of conduct. My daughter called me just before I left. The election counting is over and Dave Clegg is 77 votes ahead. So, he may well be the next district attorney and I think that will...
I don't think we can announce that.
Well, I just said that he's...
It hasn't been formalized.
Oh, no, it was, well, it was in the paper.
Well, that must be true.
I think, I think one of the two things that, you know, administratively and as a board, and Dr. Joe Pobus loves when I use this phrase for that, he always says, "Stay the course. Stay the course." We've committed to this, we would, let's stay the course. Let's not, let's not grab at something new and dismiss and disregard something that we have a really good indication is going to work or is, or is not, or is it the same it is working? So, it's kind of, it's kind of, I guess, quoting former president, but it's, it is, it is a thing to stay the course and, you know, the administration and our teachers just kind of continuing to push forward even if it was a little, a little slower than it should have been because it was difficult. I mean, especially our restorative practices, you know, we had a pretty, you know, we felt very confident that this was something that we needed to do and it was going to work. So, we were staying the course and, you know, finally this year, I think, when I, when I announced my goals to the board, the year, the board adopted my goals, I said, "This is getting kind of the year to stop talking about stuff and start showing the things we're doing." And that wasn't, that was intentional. That wasn't, and you're not, you're not just starting now. That's five years of building for me to be able to say that this is the year that we're, that we're gonna stop talking and doing. So, we are doing and I'm really excited and I think it's, it's hard work, it's a lot of work, but it's, but it's... I think it's, it's hard work, it's a lot of work, but it's the work we should be doing.
And obviously, the training is going on in the teaching, in the, in the building level, because we're not getting teachers standing up here complaining that we're not doing suspensions for those other items, that everyone is on board with it, which is a credit to you and your administration.
And they really are, they're hungry for more information about it, I have not had any conversation with, you know, at the union table, or any of us who have other teachers, or any of the groups that we meet, but they call, we don't want to do this, not once, I have not heard of that, I've heard, we need more help, we need more training, we need more information, but no one said, you know, what's wrong with me, we're not doing this, you know, that's really, that's a credit to the entire organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay.
And now we're.
Well, that's okay, interesting. We'll move on to the Board of Education, first on the agenda is the Audit and Finance Committee, Mr. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chansey. The committee had met last November twenty-sixth, and I would like to report a couple of things. The committee was a receipt of the treasurer's claims and orders reports, and also the final reports for the month of October, which you accepted the reports, and I would like to move them for acceptance by the board.
Second.
Your discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Also, the committee accepted extracurricular activity clubs, you know, all the new clubs combined, the Keesley High School and the two middle schools, and all those clubs are in the council agenda, but you know, you can discuss anything if you wish, and the other thing I wanted to say, this month, this month, the eternal auditor is in the building snooping around, the business office, looking up the business operations and compiling his report of the recent assessment for the year, which you probably, we have that report sometime in early spring, yes, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Policy Committee, Mrs. Stewart.
Thank you. We met on December sixth, last Friday, and I want to say, you know, there's no one here except our faithful few, but I, I just want to thank the administrators and the board members and community members who serve on policy, because they, you can't tell from our motions and our, it seems everything's so pro forma, but I think that people don't realize that committee meetings, there's so much intense discussion, and really a desire to review what we do and make sure that we're doing it right for the district, and I don't think that people see that at this meeting, so I want to thank those people, especially on policy, because sometimes those meetings are almost as long as this one.
For a while.
But this past meeting was pretty short, and we, tonight we are going to move for adoption, and I guess I need to read the, the whereas, whereas the Kingston City School District is contracted with NISPA as consult, no, that's not it, yes, it is, for NISPA as consultants to the Board of Ed for the review, amendment, and adoption of its policies, manuals, and whereas the subcommittee of the board in consultation with NISPA and legal counsel have prepared the following policy for amendment and/or adoption, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the following amended policy. Tonight we are moving policy five six zero five, voter registration for students, and six seven zero zero, purchasing with regulations, which had its first reading the last time.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? May I have them stayed adopted?
And tonight we are moving that the, I guess it's not a motion, but we are offering the policy for school volunteers for its first reading, we had a lot of conversation about it to make sure that we bring it up to date and meet some concerns, there's more pressure in terms of social media, and we want to ensure that our school volunteers are being appropriate, and, and have to apply now, the big change is that they have to apply every year, and I think we're also going to have an effort to make sure that everybody in the buildings is aware of what the policies are, so that teachers understand what their obligation is before they allow people into their classrooms, and so that is what we're giving you tonight for your first reading, we still are asking our counsel for more clarification on committees of the board, I know it seems like a simple thing that should have been resolved, but it keeps on going on, and so we are waiting to find out what the final opinion will be for how many board members can serve on district committees, not on board committees, and as soon as that's clarified by our counsel, we would expect that we'll be able to bring that to the board. Any questions? Comments?
I really appreciate the revisions to the volunteer policy, I, you know, we had this in place for a while, it was new, and so it's time to take a look at it and see. So it seems to me that the big changes are the yearly for all tiers?
Yes, for every tier.
Okay, that we'll be checking the sex offender registry?
Yes.
And I thought I saw something about background checks, but maybe that was just.
The background checks are now the responsibility of the district, not, if there's a background check, then the district, if there's any cost, the district.
So, so does every, is every applicant going to have a background check?
No.
Tier three.
Just tier three?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be written out in the regulations.
Okay, and so then we have some decisions to make about, like, what, if you have some kind of criminal record, what then disqualifies you, so like, I can imagine that we'll probably see a bunch of, like, DWIs and stuff like that, and how far back do we go, like, what, you know, where's our threshold, I think that we should have a conversation about what the threshold is for what we would require for someone to be, and we should be clear about that.
And that probably belongs in regulations, I would think.
I would imagine.
Not in policy.
Okay, so that's something that you would do, I just think, so, I could just imagine, like, it's just important to be clear about that and stuff. Why are you laughing?
It's a good point.
No, it's a good point.
Okay, and I'm also, it's going to be really cumbersome to do this every year, so I'm just wondering how, especially at a big school, like, the high school, I'm just wondering how, how administrators feel about that, and if there was any thought about differentiating maybe every year for tier three, but every few years for tier two, maybe it's a, it's a nightmare to keep track of that, you know, I don't know, what were thoughts about that?
Well, I, I think that, my understanding is that teachers could have the forms available for people who are interested in coming in their classrooms, let's say, tier one and tier two, and have the parents fill them out and give them to their building administrator, and I don't think they all come due at the same time, I, I have the sense that it's a rolling kind of thing, so that if you have a trip coming up, that's when you would ask for probably chaperones. We didn't discuss that as a concern, one of the things we did discuss is when we were going to implement it, but I think we should talk about, I don't know, do you think it's in?
I think that's part of regulation as well, but us creating the process for.
Wait, what's part of regulation?
The process to, how our administrators will handle this.
But what about the question, will it be burdensome on, let's say, the high school?
Sure, sure, well, it will be burdensome.
Dr. Dovavich is right, because the references have to be followed up, you know, those phone calls have to be made.
Yeah, I think.
That's a lot to be done at once, if everybody's going to come due, so a rolling renewal might be the best.
Well, and it has, it has been rolling, you know, we get them as people, it's no, there's no due date or anything like that, I think one of our efforts is going to be a lot of communication in the spring for people for the next year, communication of the summer, and then communication right in fall, make sure people know, hey, you've got to do this, because people won't, people will know, won't know that, I think we need to, you know, we'll work with our building administrator to create a process that will, that will move it a little more quickly, or make it a little less burdensome, the issue is, you know, four years is a long time.
Yeah.
In the middle schools and the high schools, and, and that's, things change, from when a parent applies to be a volunteer, or a person applies to be a volunteer in the fifth grade, by eighth grade, I mean, life happens, I think it's important for us to be able to continually understand who and who is working with our students, you know, no matter the tiers.
Yeah, in the conversation, we talked about how years ago, there was so little regulation or even awareness of who was in and out of the buildings, it was all kind of a Good Samaritan kind of thing, and so that came, to some degree, a long way, and now there are different pressures, a lot of it surrounding, I think, the use of technology and the internet and all of the chats and Facebooks and things like that, that may not have been seemingly going to be a problem, but they can be, so I think that we are trying to address that by making it an annual.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just think it's a lot.
Yeah.
And so, you know, maybe if people can be encouraged to fill out their forms over the summer, and then that can be a time when principals, I mean, I, there will be some rolling for sure.
Sure.
But I think you also kind of want, you kind of know if you want to be a chaperone for your kids, so, you, you know, people could be encouraged to do it over the summer so that the principals aren't, you know, slammed in September with everyone saying.
Right, by annual, we didn't really specify, but I suppose the regulations could specify if it's a year that it's enforced, as opposed to, like, in September, you have to have it done annually, so like, if somebody comes due in November, or, I don't know.
I think we'll take a look at that, but what we get a lot of is, we get, we get front-loaded a lot in September, and then we get a lot in the spring, because a lot in the spring, we get a lot of people who want to go on the Springfield trip, so that we go, you know, help out the field days and those kind of things, so we get loaded on those two ends, so sometimes people don't think about it until they go, I want to be, I want to go do that, and they, they had no intention of volunteering until they went to chaperone trip to the Bronx Zoo, and then they, then they put their name in, so it is, I mean, I think school year to school year might be our, might be our best bet, you know, no matter what time during the year they, they apply, just to keep it consistent.
And also, because then people will start to get into a groove, and then they'll write, and so I think that's better.
We've been, we've been doing this long enough, though, that people know, I mean, parents know, they have to apply to be a volunteer, it's very, in the beginning, we got some complaints of, I didn't know that, and it made sense, because it was new, but people know now, I mean, they know, if you want to, if you want to do something voluntarily, you need to apply and be approved.
But I wouldn't necessarily say that someone who applies in March can't be a volunteer, I would just say, I mean, in my mind, it makes sense then, that that person then applies again for September.
Applies to September, right.
It's not that they have to wait till March to apply.
Yeah, yes, so they, they come in the spring for the spring trip, but then if they want to go, they got to do it again the next school year.
They have to do it again the next, right.
Dr. Pedelino, a person whose parent X is approved to be a chaperone, drudgery number process, is it regulation or is it policy where we say, well, if you did X, Y, and Z, you got DWI, you're not a, you know, is that policy?
I think it's, I think it's regulation, I mean, I, I think it's, I think we put that in regulation.
That says X, Y, and Z.
Your policy gives, your policy gives us our overall, you know.
It has to be done annually.
It's broad, your policy is broad, your regulations are.
So if you commit felony, you're, you don't qualify anymore.
We also talked about putting this out, once the changes are done, putting this out on the website, so that it is totally transparent, that they can see, there'll be a whole, like, the bullet that you got saying that school was going to be closed, that will go on the website.
Hey, remember, volunteer form, hey, remember, you have to apply, kind of thing.
That's a good idea, at the end of the school year to do one of that.
Do we have online access to the application, or can we do a fill-out form that they can fill it, fill it out on the, on the webs?
It's currently a paper form that is available on the website, but.
They have to.
We're going to be looking at, we have an online application, like, employment process right now, that transference is volunteer application to that system that we already have built in place, we'll be able to manage it, I think.
That might, that might make the administration a lot easier.
Yeah.
Is there a, and do we have a database?
Yeah.
With, with email addresses that we can notify people that way?
Yes, we do.
That it has to be done?
Yep, we have all of our volunteers.
So we don't have anybody saying, well, I didn't know that, I had to reapply.
But can I be really crystal clear, my question was, is it policy or procedure? Revocation, revocation, is that policy or procedure, exactly?
What, what constitutes, I, I still think it's, I still think it's regulation, you know, the policy is very broad, when we get into regulation, you know, we, we're doing this background check, well, we're doing the background check for a reason, you know, so what we find in the background check, now, that doesn't mean we, in regulation, we shouldn't set something that is written and solid, but, you know, I still think that's a regulation thing that will.
Okay.
And the policy does, I believe the policy includes language that says that the administrator can at any time revoke the, the volunteer status, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me right now.
Am I dreaming that, or is that?
No, that's correct.
Didn't that answer my question?
Okay. Go ahead, I could.
Okay, thank you.
When it comes to, again, in the regulations, will we see, for example, you say, if they had DWI, for example, whatever it is, will we see before this comes into place and becomes that, is that something that we should say that they can't volunteer for, if that was two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, I mean, how are you going, because the disproportionality of what, what people have been charged with and whatnot, it's really rampant.
Yeah, I mean.
That's true.
Right.
The, not much, I think we need to maybe look at some, some examples of how, I mean, you know, I think about the fingerprinting for certification, State Education Department, I mean, you're not going to not get your teaching certification if you have a DWI, you're still going to get it, that kind of thing, it's really, you know, and I think it's a conversation maybe we need to have before we put the regulation together and then come back to policy and talk about it with them, but, but, I mean, you know, a lot of it is about what, what, does this offense endanger the welfare of a child moving forward, does this show that, you know, you know, five years ago, they had, you know, something, you know, that's, I think we need to kind of find our way around that a little bit.
Exactly.
I think also we should, we should apply a different standard to different levels, for instance, I think DWI conviction might have, be more important for level three, where a person is going to be, going on an overnight, be it an overnight chaperone, you don't want your chaperones to be drinking, over drink, drinking in excess while they're chaperoning.
Now, are these all nuances in the policy, or this regulation?
Policy shouldn't really have nuances, policy should be broad, nuances happen in our, in our.
Regulations, policy should be broad.
Right.
Because you can change the regulation without a huge.
Policy.
To block the board, the board doesn't need to be involved, they can see if there's a need.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll start.
And there are phrases like, to the discretion of the superintendent, or, you know, we're going to give discretion, because that's not our role, our role is just to have a policy.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're talking about Board of Education, we have a, a book study coming up on February twelfth, and we have a list of books that are Amy, Cassandra, and Kathy that Dr. Pedelino distributed to us, so, so that we can have the opportunity to start reading a book over the Christmas, over the winter break, can we, can we select a book now?
We can pick an album, no guarantee we'll read it.
Oh, pick a great.
It's like Christmas homelife.
No, we should definitely pick one now, because I need as much lead time.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so we have, we have the books here that are listed.
I don't have the list in front of me, so.
Oh, you haven't?
Should we all send you our, like, should we prioritize in order, and then you choose the top vote getter or something?
Yeah, well, we can, yeah, we can, we can do this.
Did they have a top?
Did you email, Dr. Pedelino?
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
Did, did they have a top recommendation?
No, there was. No, there wasn't a top recommendation.
Still, please.
And there's also possible that we could, I'm reading a book right now called Stony the Road. It's by Henry Louis Gates Jr. It's a, a new, recently released, recently written book. It's about reconstruction, the ten years, or ten or twelve years of reconstruction. And then, I didn't know this, but the period after that was called the redemption period. And I never heard that. You know, I heard about, you know, carpetbaggers was about all I heard about that whole period of time. But there's, there's lots of, there's lots of really disturbing photographs in the book that were published between 1875 or 1877 and even as late as 1930 or, that really give you, that's really impactful about.
An unequivocal proof of a quid pro quo. It does not exist. Democrats know their secret. They want to prove their case. It's rather shocking that they've built their.
That was intentional.
So one of the things that he says in this book, and he makes the point, is that the Civil War ended slavery, but it didn't eliminate racism or it didn't, it didn't end white superiority. And when you see some of these photographs that, you know, inundated the air, well, there weren't airwaves then, I guess, but, you know, that were published, you know, how does, how does this white superiority get embedded in the culture? Or is it, and, and does, how, how difficult does that make it to overcome it? I don't know.
Do, do we want to, does Board members want to look at the list? Maybe make a list of your top three, send it to Camille and she can tally them up and we can let everybody know, okay, here is the number one vote getter, two, three.
Yeah.
And if you want to recommend something else, recommend it in your.
Yeah. So I think if you haven't, I think that Dr. Pedalino sent this out December 6th, was it? It was recent.
Well, I can send it out again with a reminder that says to you.
That'd be great.
Yes. I'll send it out again with a reminder to, send me your top.
Send out December 4th.
December 4th.
And then the second thing on Board of Education that I put on the annotated calendar was the invitation that, to a forum that was postponed from last week and is going to be next week on February 12th, I'm sorry.
December?
December, yes.
To December 17th.
December 17th, the Citizens Action Forum.
Mr. Shaughnessy, I, I just wanted to say, I don't really think that things that are not board events belong on the annotated calendar because that goes up with the board calendar on the website, well, at least it has the past. And I think people expect that those are board sanctioned, which you said in another email that that wasn't, it was an invitation, unless we wanted to ask them if they want to turn it into a coffee and conversation and maybe do one of those presentations at the beginning on the 17th. It's a hard time right before the holidays for everybody, though. I think, you know, that we're, we're all inundated with stuff right now.
Yeah, I, no, I realize that, but, you know, but this is a community group. There are constituents, my feeling is that they are, are, they're my constituents, and if they think it's important to have this forum and then, and invite me to show up, if I can, I will do it.
But they're, they're all of our constituents.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'm saying, yeah, I know.
They are. But then if any other community group invites us and it's not a coffee and conversation, we just put it on the calendar? I, because I think that, that, the connotation is that this is a board event and we are going to be speaking for the board, which we're not. You know, it's an individual invitation. And all of us are citizens and we're, you know, free to go wherever we please.
Right.
But it's not a, a board event.
I would agree. I think that there would be a confusion there. I think if it's a coffee and conversation, that belongs on our, but, but that's our event. Citizens Action, I mean, we all participate one way or another in the community, but it's not, I think that's true. It shouldn't be on our calendar.
Okay, well, I'll take it off. We can take it off. But it's still, you know, it was an invitation that was extended.
I can't go that.
To the board. Well, you know.
Or, or invite Citizens Action to hold a coffee and conversation.
That would be.
And that would be fine. Because then, then the practice is then, it's open to the whole community. It's not just confined to a small group. And, and really, in reality, it may be a small group that shows up.
Yeah, it may be.
But as long as the whole community is invited.
I like that idea of asking them to host this easy.
Well, it's, it's there next Tuesday, 5:45 at the Hodge Center.
Three times, so I won't be able to be, I'll be in Georgia.
Okay.
It's warmer.
Are you going to be there, Mr. Spicer?
I'm going to try.
I mean, somehow, the invitation to me came through you, I think.
Yeah, they, they invited me and they wanted somebody higher up on the food chain to speak to educational issues. So I gave them the board president's name.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I think a lot of it, you know, it may be an example of what you said. You go to a forum and you get a lot of complaints and they don't know what you, what you're doing. And, you know, maybe you can diffuse some of those anxieties that are expressed. So I told him I would be there, so that's, that's that.
What time is that?
It's at 5:45. It's a potluck dinner that they're providing.
And where is it?
It's at the Hodge Center on Franklin Avenue, Franklin Street. Okay. So let's go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that, any resolutions that a board member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing whether there are any questions or comments about any of the resolutions on the, on the agenda, on the consent agenda? Call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aye, seconded. Okay. Okay. I already, I already asked for comments and questions, so we'll just move on to the, to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimously adopted. There are some donations.
Kingston City School District respectfully and very happily accepts a donation of $10.75 gift cards for the purpose of my hat, warm socks, mittens for our students in our 10 schools from the Fair Street Reform Church. We also accept a generous donation of $162 from the Meyer PTA.
We have old business. Let's hope the next time we bring. So we got a proposal from NISBA for the goal-setting training on March 11th. And I understand a purchase order has gone out for that, so that event will be on. And I think I sent, did I send out the letter that came? I thought I did. The proposal that came from, from NISBA. Okay. So that's what it will be. Is there any other old business? New business? Can I?
You have, it has a resolution.
Yeah, well, I mean, Camille made copies. But I can, well, I'll read it. Resolution 2019 BOE 38, resolution in support of Senate Bill 2038A by Senator Carlucci and Assembly Bill 1922-A by Assemblyman Deleff. I think that's how it pronounced. Whereas both houses of the New York State Legislature have, have passed bills, those referenced, and transmitted to the governor for his approval. And whereas the board, the bill aligns the education law provisions regarding absentee ballots for school district elections with the simplified and streamlined election law provisions for absentee ballots administered by the Board of Elections. And whereas the New York State School Boards Association has sent a letter to the governor urging his approval of the bill, now therefore be resolved that the Kingston City School District Board of Education supports the bill, endorses the NISBA letter, and urges the governor to approve the bill. And be further resolved, the district clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution and the NISBA letter to the governor.
So moved.
Just in terms of discussion, I don't have a copy of the Board of Education absentee ballot. It was brought to my attention at the last board election by someone who, actually, was Tony Adamas, accosted me at, at the polling place and said, what does that board, what does that application mean? Because parts of it are just nonsense. You can't understand why it's there. And this is the, this is the board, this is the absentee ballot that the Board, the Board of Elections has. It's one page. A lot of it, the lower third of it is just the signature of the voter. And I think Camille can comment on it.
Well, when I first, when I first came to this district, I asked Margot then, this application is ridiculous. Like, I don't understand it, how do we out people? And I asked if I could change it, and she said, no, it's education law. And last year, when he got the question, I, you know, I, I asked again, I think you did too. And we got the same answer. So I don't know why they're bringing it up now, but they're changing it and hopefully we'll be able to change it now.
Well, if the governor, if the governor approves, I, I read the legislative history of the bills and it goes back several years. It was introduced each year and never went anywhere. And now, now it's gone to the gov, it's been passed and gone to the governor. So hopefully, he has to approve it by December 31st or it will expire. And I hope he doesn't do that. So, was there any other comments on the resolution?
We revisited January 8th and, you know, hopefully he signed it.
Yeah, I hope so. I got a, I had asked NISBA to send me a, a notification when the governor, when it had been sent to the governor. I didn't realize then that these bills that pass the, those that pass the Senate and Assembly, they stagger it, they, they sit on them and they parcel them out to the governor over an extended period of time. So even though this bill was passed by the legislature in June, it just went to the governor last week. Okay. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimously adopted. Any other new business? Okay.
I, I got a few phone calls today about slippery roads around the high school. So I don't know if there's a way that we can work with the city to kind of make sure that those roads get cleared first. I mean, I'm not saying that we should have called the two-hour delay at all, but it seems like one of, there were a few slippery parts and some, some slippery parts. And so maybe it makes sense to just touch base with the city and ask them to pay close attention to those areas.
Yeah, and we had some slippery parts here in Foxhole, we had some slippery parts by many, you know, in a lot of the different areas. It was a weird morning.
No, I know. I'm, I'm really not faulting that decision. I just think the high school is an obvious congestion point and so we should really, the city should make it a priority.
Yeah, and my point, I, so my point is that we had that issue around several of our schools and around several neighborhoods everywhere, really, but, yeah, I can, and we can, we can have a conversation. I blame Tom.
Right.
Tom, please.
So maybe, you know, working with the municipalities around all of our schools. I mean, you know, the high school has student drivers, which is why I think it's maybe a little bit more treacherous.
Andrew Street was bad this morning. So is Mary's.
Andrew Street was bad.
Mary's.
And Mary's. So it could be just that we need to.
I don't understand why Mary's at me because that's where the hospital is.
It wasn't good.
I know.
There was an accident over there this morning.
Okay, thank you.
And also, it's treacherous for walkers, too, so the sidewalks are, can be treacherous. So.
Well, the city, Snowplow is given priority to Broadway, Foxhole Avenue, Albany Avenue, they do their main access roads. And then they stop pushing on the side streets, so. It was a queer morning today, so.
Yeah.
Probably was the first.
A lot of people with frozen doors.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most expected, the frozen roads.
Any other, oh, new business? Did you have your hand up?
No.
River Charles? Okay.
Say, I should.
He's all, he's.
Board member announcements?
I have two quick things. Reminder, Saturday, the 14, or, this Saturday is the robotics at the high school field house. You'll be amazed, and it's quite an honor for us to be hosting that and these two people that have taken that on for our students. So, and they were talking about it at NISBA, and I, I knew nothing about it, that it was happening here. And they were like, who do we have to get ahold of in Kings? And I looked at them, I knew nothing. So I did find out for them and emailed the person back so that they knew, but it'll be fabulous if you even get an hour to spend there, you'll, I think you'll be amazed. And the other thing is, Jim and I went to see Resilience in Orange County, and Dr. Pedalino sent you out the memo of the dates, the 13th, the 16th, and 31st of January, what's happening in our district. If you get it, you really should get an opportunity to see that. It was the most powerful, it was all about what Dr. Pedalino was talking about, his report. And it's such an incredible documentary that I highly recommend seeing that.
I know, when you were.
Paper Tiger is going to even volume one.
I've heard that Paper Tiger may not be family-friendly, family-appropriate.
It's suitable for you to watch on Netflix at home.
Yeah.
But not for us, this sort of show. Amazon Prime, I'm sorry, not Netflix.
When you said, when you were talking about it at the podium, you, you said it was powerful. And that was the word that was used by several of the participants at the viewing that we saw, how powerful it was. So I hope a lot of adults, a lot of parents and adults in the community have an opportunity to see it. And I think, I thank you that it's going around the district for showing. Any other board member announcements?
I just need everybody not to rush out when you leave. I'll, I'll explain when the meeting's over, but I just need everybody not to rush out. Everybody not to rush out.
Okay.
Is that a joke?
I'm rushing.
It's a warning.
If it is, Mr. Pedalino and I are the only ones in on it.
Okay.
I'm a suture.
We have public participation. The only one who might speak is Maureen Powers. And she's most welcome to do so.
Did you sign it?
Crazy, is this time?
Actually, I just wanted to speak because your presentation, Dr. Pedalino, brought some thoughts to me, and I promised to be brief. But today, I was at Kingston High School all day. As many of you know, every semester I co-teach the health class on rest self-examination and district evaluation, and today was that day. And it's, health class also is nine through 12, the exam of ages and levels of maturity. I wanted to comment because I've seen, I've been doing this for 20 years at the high school, and I really have seen a shift. And I think that, for many reasons perhaps, but in part, I think it is some of the training that the teachers have been going through, and I think it. it is some of the training that the teachers have been going through, and I think it's about the environment at the high school, it's a safe place, years ago, when we talked about cancer, the kids' question to me was, what was it like to be bald, and, you know, I guess that's a reasonable question to ask, but today, nobody asked me that question, it was really, it was really more, what was it like for your family, what was it like for your kids, kids shared, it's a hard topic, and it's a very, you have to be very sensitive, kids shared, you know, my grandma has cancer, one girl became very emotional, so, you know, we're a team in there, the teacher's responses to the kids, I thought was, was really spot on, and I saw kids put arms around other kids, when you could tell that they were, they were relating to the topic of cancer, so I just wanted to, to make that point that it is, it is a safe space for kids to share on a very hard topic, and the teachers, you know, they're, they're right there with the kids, and it's a, so, I think that what you're doing is working, I guess, it's trauma, it's social, emotional, it's a lot of things, but I was, I was really proud to be a part of the presenting team, and to have been doing it for as long as I have, thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. We don't need a second executive session, I think.
I'd like to say, I just would like to thank Mrs. Bowers, because she always goes above and beyond for our students, even though you are not a board member any longer, the fact that you have for 20 years made such an impact, and even if they were asking about what it was like to be bald, I think that information that you gave them later on, when they were mature enough to think about it, or in the situation, might have made all the difference, so thank you.
And then my little box of trust, I do bring, we have hats for children, so we can talk about, it's not, there's no taboo subject, they're great, it's a great.
Can talk about?
I didn't know being bald was taboo.
We do talk about a little, is it easier for a guy to be bald, or a woman to be bald, so I guess it's easier.
Effortless.
I think for my time on the board, it seems like it's been a requirement of the superintendent,
and the high school principal now, right, the last two?
Yeah. Okay, I want to wish you all a happy holiday.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, but don't leave.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.